Welcome to the Hingham Zoning Board of Appeals. It is April 9th, the time is 7:35. The first item on our agenda this evening is Riverstone LLC, application for a comprehensive permit under Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40B, to construct a 36-unit condominium development, including nine affordable units, on approximately 6.7 acres of land located off Ward Street, map 124, lots 70 to 75 and 26, in Residence District B. The revised site layout plan dated March 9th, 2018 depicts 32 units. And this hearing is a continuation from March 26, 2018, and these proceedings are being recorded by H-CAM and by the zoning office. Who do we have for the applicant this evening?
My name is Warren Baker. I am counsel for the applicant. With me are Brad McKenzie from McKenzie Engineering and Brian Murphy, principal of the applicant.
As we have been doing at our prior hearings, we're going to start off with the zoning administrator reviewing for us items that have been received since the prior meeting. Emily.
So, on behalf of the applicant, we received this evening a response to traffic peer review comments from March 6th and April 3rd, 2018. The response was prepared by Ronald Mueller, P.E. of Ron Mueller and Associates, and the response is dated April 6th, 2018. Materials submitted by representatives of either the board or the town include a memorandum dated April 2nd, 2018, from Emily Wentworth, zoning administrator, documenting incomplete or missing submittal requirements reviewed during prior hearings. Supplemental traffic engineering peer review dated April 3rd, 2018, prepared by Jeffrey Dirk, P.E., PTOE, FITE, Vanessen Associates, Inc. Civil engineering peer review comments dated April 9th, 2018, prepared by Patrick Brennan, P.E. of Amory Engineers. Supplemental report wetland resource area review comments dated April 9th, 2018, from John Zimmer, wetland scientist from South River Environmental. Map of potable wells in the area around Viking Lane was prepared by Lonnie Fornier, GIS administrator, one of the many hats she wears around here. It is just a visual depiction of the wells discussed by the Board of Health in its March 6th, 2018 comment letter. We also received department comments from Mary Savage Dunham, Community Planning Director, dated April 9th, 2018, and department comments from Glenn Olson, Police Chief, dated April 9th, 2018. Materials received by abutters or members of the public include correspondence regarding the revised 40B submittal of March 9th, 2018 by Riverstone, from Yvette Yusef, M.D., 48, Ward Street, dated 4/4/18. An email from Ellie Hecky of Five Autumn Circle, dated April 4th, 2018, attached to which was a plan of land for 42 to 56 Ward Street, prepared by Nanteskett Survey Engineering LLC, dated March 5th, 2018, and comments on the Riverstone proposal from Jean and Jean Silverio, Six Autumn Circle, dated 4/7, 2018.
Thank you.
That's the list.
A couple of things. First, there are so many of you who have been coming on a regular basis, I feel like we should be providing refreshments or something because your participation is really very important to this hearing, and I really appreciate it, and I wish we could have popcorn or something, but maybe later. Second, as the hearing proceeds, if you are not able to hear, if someone is not speaking up, if I'm not speaking up, please raise your hand, and it'll be a signal that we should speak louder. So, I just want to make sure everyone gets to hear what is going on. And Emily, you mentioned the report from John Zimmer, who's our wetlands peer review person, who I understand is not here this evening.
Correct, yeah, he was unable to hear the conflict.
So, could you just, since there are many other people who are here, before we get to those reports, if you could just give me a brief summary of what John Zimmer's report is about?
Yep, so, the report documents the results of a field investigation he conducted on April 5th of 2018, along with the applicant's wetland scientist, Brad Holmes. During the site visit, he identified adult fairy shrimp within a portion of the onsite wetland resource area that previously had been identified as a potential vernal pool. As a result of these observations, the report confirms that the area is a vernal pool habitat, and that it meets both the physical and biological criteria necessary for certification by the Massachusetts Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program. And even if not certified as a potential vernal pool, it is regulated under our local wetland regulations. So, he goes on to recommend that the applicant take certain steps, including, one, a delineation of the limits of the pool on the plan, two, that they conduct additional field investigations this April and May, to determine either the presence or absence of other vernal pool breeding amphibians, three, provide a narrative as to how the vernal pool will be protected against adverse impacts associated with the project, and four, submit a specific list of waivers from local vernal pool performance standards for his further review.
Thank you. Mr. Baker, are there new items that you would like to review for the board this evening?
I would like to, there was a submittal, actually today, as some of many other submittals do, and if I may, I have some hard copies. Additionally, I know that you have a number of your peer review experts here tonight to give their testimony and follow-up on some of the materials we just received. I think we would like to make just one comment on the Board of Health letter that we heard at the last hearing, and Brad, you may want to handle this.
We have contacted our expert, our hydrogeologist, to review the letter and to provide a response. It should be, hopefully, within the next two or three weeks.
Who is the hydrogeologist?
We believe it's going to be Peter Dillon.
And do you expect a written comment, or just?
A written comment, written.
Any preliminary observations at this point, or are you going to wait for?
No prelim, no, nothing preliminary.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I know that we've been talking about Aquarian and hydrant flow tests and a will-serv letter. We did have some correspondence with them last Thursday, and we're told that the letter is, it could be any day, and we're waiting for a date from them to conduct the hydrant flow test, so.
Are you saying that you've had correspondence or discussion?
Telephone conversation on Thursday.
Is there any written correspondence that you'd like to enter into the record on this?
I believe we previously entered an application that was submitted to Aquarian into the record, which was a request for a will-serv letter.
Okay. Do we have that? Okay, thanks. Anything else?
No.
Okay, we have had our peer review folks doing what they do best, and I'd like to ask a couple of them to speak. I would start with Mr. Dirk on traffic. Yes, please. What you may want to do is move it over so that you're, to all of us, and just not keeping your back.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Jeffrey Dirk, principal with Vanessen Associates, and we're the traffic engineers on the project. So, as you had mentioned, we did have the opportunity to review the revised site plans for the project, and we issued a comment letter dated April 3rd that contains our review comments. I do note that a response to some of the traffic comments was submitted tonight, which I had a chance to review, just kind of cursory, in a cursory manner, and I can-
I don't mean to test your speed reading capability, but to the extent you can respond.
Sure. So, I'll go through the comment letter. So, as I mentioned, we did have an opportunity to review the revised site plan that was submitted, and probably as was presented the last hearing, the most significant thing from the standpoint of our review is the relocation of the access to the property. And so, we did review the site distance analysis that was done for the relocation of the access, provided some comments, and I'll go through those, and I believe some of the responses that were submitted tonight by the applicant's traffic engineer went into a little bit more detail in terms of responding to our comments on the site distance analysis. But just digging into our comments, relative to the traffic study, there were just a few minor outstanding items with respect to the motor vehicle crash analysis that we'd asked them to look into. We didn't expect that those findings were going to change anything with respect to our original review, and it seems like at least a review of the information, again, at a cursory level that was submitted tonight, that was generally the findings, that the crash data validated the information that was in the original traffic study. We did also comment about the analysis that was done for Autumn Circle. Originally, we had asked the applicant to provide or propose some traffic calming measures or items specifically to address the impact that the project is projected to have in Autumn Circle. There was not a response submitted to that, other than we noted that they did convert the cul-de-sac area to a modern roundabout, which we surmised, although it wasn't pointed out by the applicant at the time, was to address not only the configuration of the cul-de-sac, we had talked about that absence of intervening measures, there's going to be a wide open area, and so we needed to see some sort of traffic control. So, it was our interpretation that the intent of the roundabout was to introduce some level of traffic control, but also to provide some traffic calming, slow traffic down going through Autumn Circle, and then to reduce the potential for cut-through traffic. And I think the applicant has provided some findings relative to that in their response that was submitted tonight, but we'll have to take a look at that and just validate that. So, the substance of our comments, given the information that we had at the time, was really the revised site plan, so I'd like to just get into a little bit more detail with respect to our findings on that. So, in looking at the plan that is on the overhead here, so as I mentioned, the access was relocated from Viking Lane down to this point here, and the primary reason for that was, and again, I won't belabor the point because it was probably presented before, had to do with the sight line triangles from the driveway that they did, in fact, cross private property. So, it's always desirable, if you can contain those lines either within the property itself or within the public right-of-way areas, that the applicant has some control over in terms of maintaining and the ability to be able to provide sight distance under all season conditions. So, the relocation of the access down to this point here, and with the plans that they provided showing the sight lines exiting the property, do clearly indicate that the sight triangles either lie entirely within the property that is under the control of the applicant, or within the public right-of-way, meaning that with appropriate conditions and with the construction methods that the applicant has proposed, they can provide and maintain the sight lines exiting the property, looking to the left or the right. We noted in our review a couple of things with respect to those sight lines. If we're looking to the east exiting the property, the sight lines, again, the topography was present, so that there was clear line of sight exiting in that direction there. I don't believe there was any topographical features that would be required to be altered to provide that sight line. Looking to the east from the driveway, there was a significant cut that was noted in this area here that would be required in order to provide the necessary sight lines. At the time, the grading we had shown was a cut of somewhere about eight feet that would be required at the maximum, and then, of course, regrading into the property. The way the grading was taking place, it appeared they would be able to meet the existing topography at the right-of-way line, meaning that there would not be a need to regrade within the town right-of-way, so they could do all of the work, it appeared, from the project side, in order to complete that cut. We did note as they drew the sight line triangles, there were some things that they needed to adjust on that, which I believe the response letter dealt with that, and basically, they were sighting from a three-and-a-half-foot, an eye height of three-and-a-half feet for the driver that was exiting the site, and they were looking at a two-foot object in the roadway, and the way that the measurement is supposed to be measured is three-and-a-half feet for the eye height of the driver to a three-and-a-half-foot object in the roadway. So, in a sense, what that would do is it picks the sight line up, which is beneficial from the applicant's perspective, because it requires less cutting in the property itself. So, I believe, and again, we'll have to look at it, the revised sight triangle plans that they provided tonight address that. What wasn't provided was the sight line along Ward Street. That's important, because we need to make sure that if a vehicle is waiting to turn left, as an example, into the project site, that if you're coming around the curve here, that you have sufficient sight distance to see that vehicle that may be stopped there waiting to turn left into the property. That information wasn't provided, we'll have to see if it was. It should have been provided as part of the response, and again, we'll review that as One of the other things, anytime that we have sight lines being met based on grading activities, in this case, maybe some significant grading activities, we can validate from the site plans and the information that's provided, that the sight line will be provided if, in fact, they complete all of these improvements. One of the things we always recommend is that as a condition of approval, you want a professional engineer to certify, once it's built and constructed, that they meet the sight line requirements. So, that was something that we had recommended that the board consider as they think about drafting conditions for the project. The other thing with respect to the sight line is because in both instances, actually, but more importantly, looking to the west, the sight line crosses what we describe as the infill area. This is an area where it will not be plowed during snow activities, and so what we recommend is, in areas where there is no snow plowing activities, that you want to allow for additional buffer for snow to accumulate in that area there. So, we've asked that a one-foot difference of what buffer be provided from the surface elevation of what the finished grading will be to the top of where the sight line is, so that allows for a foot of accumulation of snow in that area, and that's pretty standard practice when you're crossing an infill area. The next comment that we had had to do with the High Street-Ward Street-French Street intersection, this is a consistent comment from our prior letter. We know based on the information provided by the applicant, as well as from the Hingham Police Department, that that intersection is a high-crash location. So, we had originally recommended, basically, a two-stage process for the applicant to consider. The first is to conduct a road safety audit, or commit to completing a road safety audit at that intersection, so that was step one. And then, step two was that as a result of the road safety audit, there'll be a series of recommendations that will come from that, and we had suggested that the applicant commit to providing, either completing specific improvements at that intersection, or providing funding to the town, so that the town would be able to complete those improvements. My understanding is the applicant has agreed to conduct the road safety audit, but has not agreed to either constructing improvements or providing funds to the town at that location. We continue to recommend that the applicant provide either some level of funding or agree to complete the improvements. We understand that there's some question, and the applicant would like some certainty, and we don't disagree with this, about what that funding cost may be. So, if they're not willing to conduct the road safety audit prior to the closing of the public hearing, to define what the improvements would be and therefore establish a cost, then we would need to develop, to the extent that the board agrees with us, a funding amount to be-
How do we establish those parameters if the study hasn't been done and we don't know?
Well, we could estimate what the improvements could be at that location, or the applicant could ask their engineer to do that, we could review that. And then, common practice in any project is that the applicant at least agree to contribute a fair share portion of what the cost of the improvements may be based on the measured impact of the project. In this case, the measured impact would be the percent increase in traffic that the project is going to add to that intersection. So, based on that percent increase in traffic, you can apply that to the cost of doing the improvements, that is, would be the applicant's fair share cost to implement the defined improvements. So, the next set of comments deals specifically with the revised site plans that were submitted. We had asked that the applicant and the prior site plan submit a truck turning analysis of both the Hingham Fire Department design vehicle, as well as a single-unit truck, which would be a snowplow vehicle, trash truck, or such, and that we also asked that the applicant confirm the directionality, whether the fire department would be coming in from Autumn Circle as their primary response route, or from Ward Street. So, with the revised site plan, the applicant provided a turning analysis for both vehicles. The turning analysis demonstrated the trucks entering from Ward Street and then exiting by way of Autumn Circle, was what they had shown. So, we had asked that they confirm with the fire department that that would, in fact, be their primary response route. I'm not sure if that's a part of the response that was submitted tonight or not, but that remains outstanding.
Is that common? I mean, just my elementary view is, fire department would go, would want to come in the closest point where they could to where the emergency is.
Absolutely.
So, that could be either location.
It could be either. So, if the fire department, if the applicant doesn't run in both directions, then they need to get, obtain some level of understanding from the fire department as to what their primary response route would be. My understanding, one of the reasons why the connection to Autumn Circle was put in place was for that secondary means. So, usually, what you do is you run the truck in both directions.
Right, okay.
Just to show that it would work. If they're not going to do that, then they need to say why Ward Street was chosen, and that would be a letter from the fire department saying that's going to be their primary means of access. One of the things that keeps coming up in our review has to do with the width of the roadway itself, and I'm going to, I'll talk about that in a couple of minutes in a little bit more detail, but one of the things that the fire truck turning analysis is demonstrating to us is that the truck still has difficulty maneuvering through the project site. In particular, we note that in entering the site from Ward Street, the truck uses the full width of the roadway, so at 24, 20 feet coming in from the project site, what you see as the truck turns in, it uses the whole road. That's not uncommon in a residential project where the truck is going to be coming into the site, especially for a fire truck. What concerns us in looking at that has to do with the fact that the applicant also responded that this is the location where the school bus will pick up. We know what ends up happening, especially with a project where, you know, it's relatively deep in terms of being able to get to the residential projects, or the homes particularly in this area here, is that what you end up having is parents will park their cars in this area here and wait for the school bus to drop off the children. If a fire truck comes in this way, or the single-unit truck with the 20-foot wide roadway, that vehicle actually turns against the curb line, meaning that there could not be any vehicles in this area here when that vehicle turns into the site. If there's a vehicle parked here, the truck can't come in and will be stopped out on Ward Street. So, again, that gets to the width of the roadway itself. Further, as the truck enters the site, the fire truck itself, what we noted in the turning analysis is that with the revised layout that's shown, the truck actually has to turn into some of the private driveways, and we noted that that occurred in this location here, and that has to do with the fact that the truck, as it's turning from a 20-foot wide road to another 20-foot wide road, in order to make that turn, portions of that vehicle actually off-track into the driveways here, so that it will go into the residential driveways. The same happens coming out of the site into this location here, again, turning from a 20-foot wide road onto the 20-foot wide road to head up to Autumn Circle. The truck does the same thing, it's off-tracking into the private driveway here.
And what happens if someone has their car parked in the driveway?
It becomes problematic. The other thing is that, the other thing is that if, you know, of course, we talked about snow plowing, the driveway needs to be clear, because the bumper of that truck is turning into the driveway areas. It's just not something that you would typically want to have happen. The truck should stay entirely within the paved area, the traveled way. So, again, the 20-foot wide road is causing these issues with the off-tracking of the truck.
Let me just amend, what I'm hearing you say, it's a combination of the 20-foot wide road with the tightness of this configuration. So, there could be other configurations where a 20-foot road would work, but given the way this project is configured, it doesn't work. That's what I'm hearing.
That's correct.
Okay.
So, these issues still come down to the width of the roadway. The applicant, in responding to the adequacy of the 20-foot wide roadway, has cited a specific source relative to low-volume roadways. So, I thought just from the standpoint of trying to, because the same comment's going to keep coming up. I've commented on the same thing in every single letter that I've submitted, so I think probably the easiest thing, I provided the design standards and referenced them in my letters, so I think just to be helpful to both the board and the applicant, I'm going to hand out those specific standards. And the first standard I want to hand out is the standard that has been cited by the applicant, and I just want to point out one specific area of this standard that the applicant's engineer, and I'll defer to them, because they do need to review this, one specific standard that the applicant missed, and of course-
Are these extras for this?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And I've highlighted the relevant sections of the standard. So, of course, anytime that we're applying engineering standards, you have to read the entire standard from the beginning to the end, just to make sure that it's applicable to what you're citing, so.
Let me just stop you. So, this is the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials' Guidelines for Geometric Design of Very Low-Volume Local Roads, ADT, Less Than or Equal to 400, 2001 edition.
So, this is the standard that the applicant has cited, or the applicant's traffic engineer has cited, for justification of the 20-foot wide roadways, and saying that it complies with engineering standards.
Got it.
Now, as you look through the standards that are provided, there are two standards that are cited. The first is geometric designs for very low-volume local roads in rural areas, and I want to emphasize rural areas. As you go to the next couple of pages-
Does that mean we need cows walking around to?
Well, it has to do with the functional classification that is given by Federal Highway Administration to Hingham, and how you're applying these standards. So, if you look under very low-volume local roads in rural areas, and we turn to the chart on page 18, this is where the applicant's traffic engineer is referencing the information. Now, I've put an asterisk next to the design speed of the roadway, which is 25 miles an hour, which is the typical, this design speed doesn't necessarily mean posted speed, but for 25 mile an hour design speed, which is what you design these roadways for, you see the 18-foot wide road is recommended. So, this is the citation that the applicant's engineer is using. Again, this is for a rural roadway. If you turn the page and go to the next section, now, these are the design standards for very low-volume roadways in urban areas. Hingham is a suburb, but is classified as an urban area by both the Department of Transportation, Mass. Department of Transportation, as well as the Federal Highway Administration. So, if we're looking at these guidelines, in urban area, which Hingham is classified as, these are the guidelines that need to be provided, and I highlighted this very specific section on this page with the, again, an asterisk next to it, and this is one of the reasons why in urban areas, a little wider road is required. And it says, "The major functional requirements for very low-volume local roads in urban areas include the ability for vehicles in opposite directions to pass one another, the need for vehicles to pass parked or stopped vehicles, the need to provide access for fire trucks and other emergency vehicles, and the need to accommodate occasional larger delivery vehicles." So, that is the criteria that applies to urbanized roadways, of which Hingham is located in an urban area. This project would fall under those criteria. The other citation is underneath that that I've highlighted, deals with the fact that in a residential development such as this, you are going to have on-street parking for when you're going to have functions or visitors at the site, at the house, so occasionally there's going to be a vehicle parked on-street. Again, that's another criteria that applies in urban areas. So, as we kind of get by that and turn to the next chart, these are the standards that are provided for low-volume roads in urban areas. And what you see is for a medium-density development, of which this project would be classified, and that's defined as a typical density of between 2.1 and 6.0 dwelling units per acre. per acre. So, we have thirty-two units on, I believe, just over six acres, and it falls within this classification. So, what you see is, we look to the right-hand side of Exhibit Two, is that it's saying the total roadway width should be between twenty-eight and thirty-four feet for a low-volume roadway in an urban area. So, that's, so this is the citation that the applicant has provided. And what I'm, what I'm suggesting is that they applied the wrong standards, and that if you apply the correct standards, the road needs to be wider than twenty feet. And again, these are guidelines, so I want to stress that. It's not an absolute. What you see underneath that table is a reference to ITE guidelines. So, the next handout I have for you is those ITE guidelines. So, we've started with the federal guideline cited by the applicant's engineer. That guideline references the ITE guidelines. What I've just handed out is the ITE guidelines, as they apply to it. And what you'll see as you go through the ITE guidelines, and I'm going to refer you to the third page, which is page eighteen, and the chart that's there. And what you see is, this chart is very similar in terms of referencing the recommendations for a residential street with a density of between 2.1 and six dwelling units per acre. And what you see is, you look to the far right-hand side, and again, I've asterisked the row in question, what you see is the recommended minimum curb-to-curb width is twenty-four feet. So, we have a federal highway document that refers to an ITE document, and the ITE document is basically saying the same thing, although it's providing a slightly narrower traveled way of twenty-four feet is the standard.
So, just so I'm clear, this document is called Neighborhood Street Design Guidelines: A Recommended Practice of the Institute of Transportation Engineers.
Yes.
Is there a date for this?
Um--
I didn't see one listed.
Yeah, I, I can provide that to you. I don't want to mis--
You can get it to us later. Okay, thank you.
So, the last standard I want to hand out is from the Massachusetts-- So, this is, the last standard I'm going to hand out is from the Massachusetts Highway Department Project Development and Design Guide. And this was cited in my prior comment letter as well. And so, the, this section from, and it's dated 2006. So, this comes from the, what's called the Access Management Section of the Highway Design Manual. And if you turn to the last page, I've highlighted the citation that would apply to the project. Now, this does deal with residential use of around ten dwelling units or greater. And what they're recommending is, for aggregations of residential use of around ten dwelling units or greater, a two-lane driveway or roadway, twenty-four width, twenty-four feet in width becomes appropriate. So, what you see in these citations is that everything is converging on the fact that all of the guidelines that are available to engineers for designing roadways are suggesting that this road needs to be wider than twenty feet. And so, this is going to, it's come up several times in my comment letters, and it continues to come up. And what you see is, we're looking at the turning analyses that have been done, is that this, the twenty-foot wide roadway as proposed is not sufficient to accommodate emergency access to the site. Not only that, as we look at the revised layout, we have on-street parking in this location here, and on-street parking in this location here. This on-street parking is, if we have, let's say, nine-by-eighteen or even twenty, nine-by-twenty parking spaces here. If you have a vehicle, design vehicle, that's nineteen feet long, and you provide twenty feet behind that vehicle for the vehicle to either back up or enter these parking spaces, the vehicle can't get in or out of those spaces. Because as it backs up, it's got just enough room to actually get back in where the curb is. And if there's a vehicle parked next to them, they can't turn the wheel. So, it requires multiple turning maneuvers to do that. And you can see where this is located in close proximity to the entrance here. That's not desirable. So, even if we were to suggest that parents will park here to pick up children, these are not functional spaces. And again, it's because behind those parking spaces, this is only twenty feet wide. It just doesn't work. So, everything, again, is converging on the fact the roadway needs to be widened. It's not functional to accommodate the design vehicles in this area here. So, hopefully, this information, I mean, the applicant has just seen this. I have cited, I have cited these references in my prior comments, but I just thought it'd be helpful so that we're not going around in circles here, to at least have the applicant have the relevant information so that they can digest it with their engineers. The last couple of comments that I had on the site plan had to do with the new road configuration that was put in place. And in particular, this road here, which I believe is Road D, one of the things that we had asked for Road D is that there is, there's no sidewalk along this roadway. So, we had asked that a sidewalk, consistent with the rest of the development, be provided along at least one side of the roadway. They proposed a mailbox kiosk in this area here. So, the, what we've suggested is that sidewalk should be on the north side of the road, connect to the mailbox kiosk, and then a crosswalk should be provided at this location here, so that residents would be able to walk and then cross the street to get where the kiosk is. The impact on that, of course, is that it pushes those units back. And one of the reasons that it would push the units back is because we had a prior comment dealing with the length of the driveways. The driveways for this roadway here do not meet those distances that we had recommended, so the vehicle actually doesn't stick out into the roadway. The way the driveways are set right now, the vehicles would protrude into the traveled way. Now, if we had a sidewalk, those would be, further exacerbate that situation. So, these units actually need to be moved back further to get the sidewalk width that's needed and the driveway width. We also noted that there was, I believe, the units in this location here, the driveways don't meet the requirements as well. So, the vehicles actually, if they're parked in that area there, the rear end would hang out into the traveled way. So, those need to be adjusted. The last comment of substantive, we had just referred to the type of curbing that's used. The applicant has revised the sidewalks, so that now we have five-foot sidewalks throughout. Rather than using vertical curbing, they're proposing sloped granite curbing. We've indicated that it's typical that you would use vertical curbing. However, in low-speed environments, which we would consider this a low-speed environment, sloped granite is acceptable. However, we defer to the town engineer and the Department of Public Works as to their acceptance of that. So, that, that comment, I think, is something that we're, we're okay with the sloped granite, but just needs to be acceptable to the town as well. So, that concludes the substantive comments. As I mentioned, and as Emily had mentioned, we did receive some responses tonight, which we'll go through.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions you have now or later on?
I don't have any at this time. No, thanks. Thank you, Jeff.
Very thorough. Yes. Much appreciated. Thank you.
Yeah.
We're delighted to have Patrick Brennan here as well. So, if you could just introduce yourself for the record, and please provide us an update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Pat Brennan with Amory Engineers, the board's civil site engineering peer reviewer. I submitted a letter this afternoon based on my review of the revised March ninth plans. I'll run through it fairly quickly. Some of my comments echo Jeff's comments, so I won't really go into those in too much depth. The first number of comments I have is what I see is incomplete or missing information that we've asked for in the past at previous hearings and so forth. The first is the revised list of waivers. I believe, or at least the latest list that I saw was the February twelfth list, which doesn't reflect this revised layout. So, we really need an updated list of waivers that reflects this layout and described exactly what rules and regulations they are seeking relief from, as we've mentioned a number of times in the past. At the February sixth public hearing, the board did request a photometric plan, and I don't believe one has been received. A number of times, I've talked about the soil testing at the infiltration systems.
Could you speak a little--
Sure. At one time, I had mentioned soil, or a number of times, I've mentioned the need for soil testing at the infiltration systems to make sure that those are going to work as designed. The applicant's engineer has stated that they would do additional soil testing in conjunction with preparation of the final site development plans. I've mentioned before that I believe it's a safer course of action to do that testing ahead of time, in case that you, you know, the soils show something different from what they're assuming, and they have to change their design moving forward. However, it could be incorporated as a condition of approval, should the board approve it. And I've mentioned some language there that could go along with that if the board wanted to do so. I believe Brad mentioned the water supply issues with Aquarian, the Will-Serve Letter, and the hydrant flow testing, so that should be forthcoming. I do believe that there's only, on this revised plan, I think there's only one hydrant shown on the site. It's up in, I think it's up in that location up there. I, I didn't see any other hydrants on the site. I know we had two or three previously, so additional hydrants would be required, and I suggest that they consult with the fire department regarding the hydrant locations. We've asked before for the full septic system design information, so that we could verify compliance with Title V and where it would and would not comply with the local Board of Health's rules and regulations. Kind of piggybacking on that is the, we've requested information regarding the loading for the septic system components that would be underneath the roadway in this location, citing that the fire department apparatus is heavier than your typical design vehicles. So, they just need to get us that information to show that that can actually be installed in that location without, without it being compromised with a fire engine.
So, what specifically are you looking for? Because you've made that request several times--
Yeah, so that's--
I don't see what we, we haven't gotten anything.
So, there's, in that location, there is the, this is the soil absorption system, which is the leaching system for the septic. There's septic tanks located up here. One of them, I believe, is partially under the road. A good portion of the soil absorption system is under that road. So, it's actual, it's the components of that system, the tank, make sure that that is capable of withstanding the fire department loading, as well as, I believe they're showing a pipe-and-stone-type leaching field. So, the piping that they use in that field needs to be structurally sound enough to withstand the loading that the fire department apparatus would, would put on top of that. And I believe the fire department, they said, and it's in one of my previous letters, I believe that their heaviest piece of equipment is eighty-two thousand pounds. With this revised layout, they did revise the drainage system, obviously, because of the roadway reconfiguration. So, we need some updated pipe size and calculations to make sure that those are all the correct sizes. So, that's the information that we believe is still outstanding. To get to some of the technical comments with this, the, I've mentioned a number of times with this proposed retaining wall right here. It's an L shape. This is sixty-four Ward Street property. And what this retaining wall will do, it's designed to do, is the high side of the wall will be the sixty-fourth Ward Street property, the low side being the project locus. This revised plan, right at that location where that pointer is, the height of the wall would be at nineteen feet right there. That unit twenty-three, right next to the wall, there's a, looks like it's a bay window or something sticking, projecting out that side of that, that unit. It's two feet off that wall. It just doesn't make sense that you would have a window two feet off of a retaining wall that's at nineteen feet high. There's also a roof. All the gutter drains from the unit, there's a pipe that runs between the wall and the unit. So, future maintenance of that pipe would be pretty limited, access to that pipe for maintenance would be limited with it being that close to the, well, having the unit and the wall that close together. The two units here, twenty-four and twenty-five, they're patio's or decks, whatever's on the rear of these units. They've said they could be either. Those go right from the unit right to the face of the wall. So, those are right against the wall. They, they are proposing a fence along the top of the wall. I've gone into comments about that before, about safety concerns. The detail that they show is the fence is set back two feet from the face of the wall. You know, so, some other protection would need to be provided, so that kids or somebody just can't walk in front of, on that two-foot section between the fence and the face of the wall, and, you know, the fall potential is a concern there. And then, just the general constructability of the wall, with it being that deep of a cut, that close to that property with the sandy soils that we've seen out there with the test pit information they provided, that excavation will not stand up if they're excavating that deep for a retaining wall. They're going to have to do something to shore up that property, that the, the land that they're trying to hold back while they construct that wall. That's an expensive endeavor, because the only way that I see that they could do that is to drive sheet piling to hold that on a temporary basis until they could construct the wall.
You said there's a risk that the wall may not hold up?
No, the wall would hold up. The problem is, the excavation, as they're excavating for the wall--
Yep.
--nineteen feet down in a sandy material, you're not going to get a straight nineteen-foot edge of excavation. It's going to slough in.
The angle--
Correct.
--you propose on that--
It's about thirty percent with sand, so, yeah.
Right, exactly.
And, and that would go back into the sixty-four Ward Street property. There is also, it appears that right here along the detention basin, that is also a retaining wall. It's about six feet high. So, they need to show that with a fence on it as well and label it. It's, I don't believe it's labeled as being a retaining wall. My next comment was kind of echoing Mr. Dirk's comments about the twenty-four-foot width of the roadways. Another comment that I picked up from Mr. Dirk's April third letter was, the grade of the road from Ward Street up through here is about eight percent. Mr. Dirk had recommended a leveling area of at least fifty feet in length with a maximum two percent grade, which is common. Your planning board rules and regulations require a hundred-foot-long leveling area at a maximum three percent grade. Some type of a leveling area should be provided. And the reason for that is, in the winter icy conditions, cars coming down this road on an eight percent slope, that's going to be difficult to stop without sliding out into Ward Street. So, that's a, that's a safety concern with the grade of the road coming up from Ward Couple of, on the roadway profiles, they didn't list the--
You start.
Okay. My next two comments relate to some content on the plans that are missing on the profile And then, again, echoing Mr. Dirk's comments about these two driveways here, they're showing it twenty feet long from the face of the garage to the edge of road and the five-foot sidewalk crossing. So, cars parked there would obviously block sidewalk access. The, I had a couple of comments about the drainage design. One was with the way that they modeled one of their depressions where stormwater will collect, and that's down in this area. I've just asked that they model that consistently, how they modeled the other depressions on the site. Comment that I made the last time, the discharge from the detention basin in this area is to this wetland area. There's an existing basin there that takes runoff from the existing Viking Lane, and the discharge, it's the same discharge, same location. However, the calculations show that under post-development conditions, the volume of runoff will be increased. They do mitigate the rate of runoff. So, it won't go there as quickly as it does today, but you're going to put more water there. And it's just unclear, the way that they've modeled the outlet from that wetland is unclear how they came up with the outlet configuration that they modeled. So, I'm just asking for some more information to show exactly how they, why they modeled it the way it is, the way they did. And what that probably means is they need some more topography around the perimeter of the wetland to show us exactly how the outlets from that wetland operate. And then, my last comment was with respect to the Board of Health letter, and I understand that they're going to respond to that. So, I, that, that was my comment, is that they, they need to respond to that letter.
And we understand they've, they are hiring or will hire Peter Dillon to address that. Yes.
I don't have any questions. I do have one on the construction of the retaining wall.
I'm assuming, I'm not a structural engineer. I do work with them. I'm assuming that the footer for that wall will be wider than the actual wall itself.
Well, the type of wall that they're proposing is one of the segmental block walls--
Okay.
--one of the larger ones. So, it actually only sits on a crushed stone foundation.
Okay.
And those walls, the mass of those concrete pieces are, they're quite large. I think it's a five-foot-deep concrete blocks that--
I'm just wondering if the excavation for a footer--
Yeah, no--
--for the system would extend-- -for the system would extend closer to 64 Ward Street.
Not, not in this, not with the type of wall they're proposing. There is some drainage that they need to install behind the wall that's shown on the, so they're, they will be excavating behind the wall slight, you know, a little bit to put in a pipe and some crushed dome, but the footing itself with this type of a wall, that's, that's not an issue with this one.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks for that clarification.
Emily.
Do we have any other peer review people here to speak to us this evening?
Not this evening.
Okay. I think I saw Chief Olson out there, and I know that you've submitted a letter, and I'm hoping you've got some comments for the board.
Good evening, Juan Olson, Hingham Police Department. I think most of my letter is pretty much well addressed by the peer reviews. I think all along I've been asking for a 24-foot roadway. Since I've been involved in the planning board and zoning boards, I've just come to realize that 24-foot roads are a necessary thing to have in all developments now. And the reason I say this is because I've seen the problems when we don't have roads that are wide enough. We talked about some curbing, and I'll go back and cite the problem we had on Union Street. For years, we had cars parking along Union Street during functioning. A redesign of that road and adding, adding curbing into the side to prevent cars from driving onto the field and using them as parking was the only way to resolve that issue. So anywhere where we have curbing put in, I think it's really crucial to have it be vertical curbing. Not only does it protect the pedestrian on the sidewalk, it serves as a warning when people are backing up and they bump into it, they know that there's a sidewalk there. But without that, if it's sloped, it's just going to come a five-foot-wide parking spot for people, and it's not going to give pedestrian safety. So that's one of the comments I would have on, on that. The intersection of High and Ward Street and French Street continues to be a really strong issue with me, because part of putting developments in is to make sure that the development doesn't change the general character or make the conditions worse. I think the studies and reports have shown that it's going to have a significant impact on an already bad intersection, and they are responsible for it, in my mind, they need to fix the problem and make it better for the community. I am concerned too with Road C with the downgrade. I saw what looked like in the map from my reading, and I'm not always good at this, but it looked like some sort of a drainage bar going across the roadway. I am concerned about water running off into the street, causing an icy condition there. The wall that we were just talking about, I've had concerns, I haven't really brought this up yet, we're talking about a 19-foot wall. We've never really talked about the construction of it, because I really wasn't sure, but a 19-foot wall would be a great climbing toy for kids. And I'm just hearing a design now where they're talking about putting big concrete blocks, probably similar to what they use on Cushing Street, going back at an angle, or other, something like that, it's just going to create a public nuisance, in my mind, that people are going to use it to get ready to climb Mount Washington or Everest or something, and they're going to just use it as a play toy. If I were a kid, I would be doing that. So that's a concern. I think we need to look into the safety issues of that wall everywhere along those walls that are being put up. I still would be, safety issues for the school buses are still a main interest. We need to sort of identify areas that school buses and parking would be allowed. And I think that anyone that goes by, I drive down here a lot looking at this roadway, one of the things that I did in all my travels, and I probably can't admit this, but when I went by Viking Lane, I generally was around, I was over 30 miles an hour, let's just put it that way. I sensed that you're going to find probably, from my experience on that street, moving it back towards old Ward Street, you're probably going to find a higher speeds than 39 miles an hour. It's very common that, you know, tickets are being issued for well over 40 miles an hour on that stretch of road there, so I think we need to do some more numbers. It looks like the sightlines may be okay, but I think without having that additional study, that would, because the data that was originally presented was off, and I think everyone knew that, that's why we went and did some more data on that. But I think it's crucial that we, you know, we're trying to put 32 units, and it just seems like, it's just way too much, and the density concerns me, because whenever we have property that's close together, we get more complaints, means more police responses in the area. So this, a project like this is definitely going to have an impact on us, and it's just too dense for the area, and I just can imagine the issues and the problems we're going to get from people complaining about people being too close to them, or noise issues or something like that, so I definitely would expect an impact and an upward trend for more calls in the area for us. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
There he is, okay. If you could just introduce yourself for the record, please.
Lieutenant Kristin Apple, from Hingham Fire Department. So, Mr. Chairman, just actually, what the peer reviewers were saying, again, the truck turning radiuses that we're seeing for this property really don't accommodate the apparatus that we have. We also have great concern about the fact that the leaching field on this latest proposal seems to extend further under the roadway, thereby causing concern that the apparatus may not be able to even drive on that roadway due to the weight of it. Obviously, with many units over there, that becomes a great concern. Also, fire hydrants, we, I think there was one proposed fire hydrant on the entire property that, that isn't nearly enough to cover that much space and everything else. As far as access, we need to see access from Autumn Circle and from Ward Street if that's how it's going to be. I mean, what's to say there's not a tree down on Ward Street? We have to access from Autumn Circle. There's a fire in the middle of the property, the first two apparatus comes from Ward Street, and the next apparatus has to come from Autumn Circle, because that's where the hydrant is. We need to see, we need to see it from both sides of the point of view. Also, as far as the rotary circle, I understand that's a traffic slowing device. From 30 years of driving fire apparatus, I can tell you that that's a nightmare for fire apparatus. It just becomes very difficult for turning and everything else. You put a vehicle in there, or somebody stops somebody on the side of the road, it becomes a bigger issue for us to even maneuver that. The 20-foot roadway, you know, you're going to have parents stop down by Ward Street going to the bus stop. You're not going to be able to swing apparatus, and it's, it's going to become a nightmare of an issue for us. I mean, again, this is a lot of things that the peer review had said, we haven't seen a lot of the comments come back from what we have submitted before, so we're just left, you know, still voicing our concerns, they haven't changed, we still have them, and they're, you know, very concerning to us as far as fire and life safety goes for the property. So.
Got it. Thank you. Joe, any comments?
Thanks.
Okay. Great, thank you. I see we have someone here from the Board of Health. Any additional comments or questions? You gave quite a extensive report last time.
Emily, you're going to project the map?
Oh, I'm so sorry, I misunderstood you. I don't have it.
Okay.
I have it. I hear, I have it for you, the map that is lying for you, are put together, showing the wells in the area.
Oh, yes.
That's what I was referring to.
This, okay. Again, if you could just introduce yourself for the record, please.
Kirk Schultz, member of the Hingham Board of Health. I'm not going to repeat myself, but when I was here a couple weeks ago, we identified a couple of reasons why we believe this site is within a nitrogen-sensitive area. One being across the street, the potentially productive aquifer that we could have for our water supply for the town. You know, Aquarian is our water supplier in town, and so it's up to them to go through with that particular process of testing that area and, and putting a well in that region, and we hope that that's something that they would follow through with, because we certainly need the additional supply support, supply source. Second, and I apologize for not having the map for you, but the last meeting, I'll hold that for everybody, at the last meeting, it was interesting that a number of individuals within the room were saying, geez, is my property contained within that map? Are you sure you have mine? And so, as I mentioned the last meeting, there's 11 properties that we identified around the signature property, and so for those in the area, you'll know it. So here's the, the signature property with the Viking Lane, and here are the properties that we've identified, 11 of them, 11 within that area. So if it's something that you're concerned that we have not included your property, or on the other hand, that you've, no longer have private well supply, you're using a public, public water supply through Aquarian, please contact the Board of Health, and we can update the map, but we do have the 11 pieces of property that-
Emily, am I correct that this map is on the town web, or we can put it on?
It will be.
So you will be able to access the Hingham Zoning Board of Appeals website where the map being discussed is available, and please check, and I would follow up to make sure that we've got it correct.
And if you look at that map, it's quite significant, because we don't have properties in the periphery, the periphery. They are budding up against this property in, I think, three or four locations. And so, as I mentioned the last time, you know, nitrogen contamination is a serious issue, and this project, of the projects that I've seen while on the Board of Health, seems to be the most unusual of the projects relative to nitrogen loading. The differential between what we're commenting on the Board of Health, where the nitrogen load at the property line needs to be five milligrams or less, and the applicant in the present proposal they have here is proposing to put in over 15 milligrams per liter, that's a serious concern to us. And so, we're not only looking to have that the property meet a state standard of 10,000 square foot per bedroom, which we do through most of Hingham, and we must do it within the zone too, but we're also looking to have them install denitrification septic treatment. And you see that all over town. Matter of fact, I imagine about 30 in here will have that type of a treatment plan in your yard when you've updated your, your septic, because of the standards with nitrogen loading that weren't available 20 years ago. We didn't have that type of denitrification technology that we do today, so those two standards. So I also wanted to come here today to identify, when we go through the comments, that we have the three, again, the 10,000 per, 20,000 square foot per bedroom, and also the, the requirement of a treatment plan for this particular property. But in addition to that, we'd like to see that the applicant actually provides with information. One of the things that we did at the last meeting was, the executive health officer went over and introduced herself and said, you know, if you want to see our data that we produced our report for, please come down to meet with me, and it can be in the office, and we can talk, because I know there's been, it's hard to do that here. And so the applicant, you know, hasn't taken advantage of that, nor have they come into the Board of Health to talk to us. So I just wanted to give them a little bit of information about the things that we would be looking for within studies, that we would be requesting as part of the Hingham supplemental regulations, which is nothing more than what the state would be looking for, for a nitrogen-sensitive area that has a budding area of private well. And so I'm just going to read them for you to have it. And I'm pleased to hear that you had Mr. Dillon for the first one. So the four that you're going to, that we would ask that you do is, and this is all contained within a Title V policy, you know, Title V was written a number of years ago, and nitrogen wasn't, we weren't as aware of the, the nitrogen safety features that we can place into the septic systems to improve the health and safety of our citizens back then, so the DEP has developed a couple of guidelines along the way to help us with that. And if you happen to chance to look at the letter that we produced, we identified both of those policies, and they are Title V policies that dictate how we go through with that particular process. So I'm just reading what one of those policies has. So I'm not producing something that is just unique to Hingham. These are state requirements for any particular location, locus that has a nitrogen-sensitive component, which it absolutely has. I mean, I don't think anyone is going to question the fact that we have a number of private wells in this area that you can see from the map, including a number of wells that abut the property. So the four things, the first is the hydrological assessment, and we hear that's going to be done. That's important for this, because we don't know where that groundwater is moving. And as we all know, the only way to deal with nitrogen is to dilute the thing, dilute that pollutant. And so where most of this property is impervious, they're moving the water in a very specific direction, and so we want them to tell us, well, you know, where is this groundwater going? Is it going towards these wells? Is it going towards the Weir River sub-basin? Where is it going? So I'm pleased to hear that's one of the reports that we're going to get. Well, how about two, three others that Title V policy requires? So write these down. The second one is a mounting analysis, and I heard a little bit about that from our engineer, the mounting analysis for the soils in the SAS, the soil absorption area. That's important. So once that pollutant, the effluent goes into those soils, we want to make sure that it can handle those soils and transport it effectively. We note that some of the Title V testing that has, well, we haven't seen much, we haven't seen any really with the Board of Health. It's been very limited as far as the test pits, and we want to make sure that entire area, if we're going to be doing, you know, onsite effluent discharge, that all of the area is applicable to the, the safe removal of effluent from that region. So again, a mounting analysis. Third, a nitrogen analysis. Now, we happen to have done one within our report based on the information you've provided, but it's up to you to do your own, because as we know, you can change the amount of impervious area in this plan, still have the same number of bedrooms, and have a different nitrogen load calculation. So if we're wrong, and it's something different, and I hear the plans have changed a little bit, you need to go through and do your nitrogen analysis. Again, even though in our report, we've already done one, I suggest you use it as a model for yourselves. And then the fourth one, which is also significant, again, it's a state policy requirement, we want to know what your groundwater monitoring program is, because this is something that we want to make sure that what it is that you're saying is actually what's going to be going on. And again, you can go on to the state policy, look at those four, and that's what I would hope to get as a member of the Board of Health and protecting the citizens of Hingham, looking at those particular, that information, those particular four assessment testing. So that's all I have for tonight. I look forward to coming back on the next visit. So instead of the two that we did in our letter, I think because we haven't heard anything from the applicant regarding, you know, any significant or serious discussion about nitrogen loading, we're going to ask that the zoning board of appeals impose these four studies upon them, because we just haven't had that type of cooperative interchange that we're comfortable that they know exactly what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe, do you have any questions?
I don't, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Emily, do you have any other town board folks that you want to make sure we-
I'm not that aware of.
Are there any other members of town boards or committees who would like to speak? Then I think we are prepared to accept general public comments. Again, this will not be your only opportunity, but if you've got something, hopefully dealing with the issues raised this evening, now is your time. You can come up to the mic, and please give us your name and residence address. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, Farouk Youssef, 48 Ward Street. I've been noticing, attended this meeting almost for two years plus, and every time there is a schedule, there is time. It reminds me with the analogy of watching a football game, where one team in the last couple of minutes just plays a clock, I'm going to give you the report three weeks from now, so you don't have any time to review it and come with some answer to that report. How long is that going to be going on for? It's been going on for so long, I think it should be an end, should be time, should be scheduled, we receive the information, we respond to it, have our peer review review it correctly, and get the proper answer, not give you a day or two or receive it the night before. I hope something will be done about that.
That's an excellent point, and we, I'm going to address that after the conclusion of these comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? And again, this is not your last opportunity, but yes. Actually, I meant you, but you'll be next.
Maureen Lynch, 10 Autumn Circle. I'm just curious, we're talking about the road width, that rotary or roundabout for Autumn Circle, what's the road width there? Do we know?
Jeff, do you know what that is? Jeff, do you know what that is?
I actually, you're talking about the width?
The rotary, yes. We're talking about 24-foot roads or 20-foot roads as they're proposed.
The circulating area would be less than 20-foot in terms of what's going around the circle itself.
So, how does a fire truck get in through there if their car's parked on the road?
So, if a car's parked in the road, it wouldn't be able to.
It wouldn't be able to.
The intent of the, what you see is kind of, if you look at the circle, there's kind of, the center of the circle is white, let's say, and then around the edge is darker. The intent of that darker area is the truck drives over the top of it. But if there's a vehicle parked in that area there, there's not enough room to do it. But the circle's made to be, that portion of the circle is made to be driven over by a truck.
So, we shouldn't have any visitors to our homes, then?
Once, you're next after that.
Brad Taylor, 16 Autumn Circle. One of my questions was just asked about trucks coming around the roundabout. The other one, you really can't see, but I've been looking on my phone, it almost looks like the house that's at the bottom of that roundabout. You'd have to go around the roundabout, two-thirds of the way, stop, and then back up into that driveway the way it's intersecting with the picture there. As well, for me, I'm right next to that, coming around, I would have to come up and almost come back into my driveway. I don't know how either of us would ever get out of our driveway. The second thing with the roundabout is, right now, the snow gets plowed down the street. Where is all that snow going to go? Right now, it goes where that road is. It would have to go, I don't know, on the roundabout? I just don't understand that. My next point is, and this is something, I'm not an engineer, so I don't really understand, the site triangle. How far back is that measured? Because I know the applicant has fences right along the road there. So, again, it may be all done, I don't really know, I don't understand that. It's just a concern I would have if I'm coming out of that road. Finally, more water is going into that intermittent stream area. So, my backyard looks over there. If I look out my window, I can see all the water that's out there. Now, we're going to put more water back there. Additionally, if you look in there right now, there's pink flags all over the place. I think somebody came out from whoever's looking at Jehovah's Witness and marked a lot of stuff, and it seemed to be around a lot of those waterways. Has that been taken into consideration if we're dumping all of this water into this area on another saturated area? Finally, that intermittent stream comes out and goes under Ward Street. As we all know, who've driven Ward Street recently, they had to replace a whole section of it because it was falling in because of the amount of water that was going under there. Now, we're going to put more water in there? You're going to have to replace that part again. Thank you.
Was someone else? No, not yet. No, no, you're, good.
Dennis Lynch, 10 Autumn Circle. Just to elaborate on my wife, with so little parking for the visitors in there, what's to keep these people from parking on Autumn Circle? They're not going to park on Ward Street. That's impossible. You get down our street now with the bends in the road, when there's graduations, holidays, if we both park on the street, me and Arthur doing our lawns, our trucks, putting our grass out, you can hardly get a vehicle through. With the curvatures in those roads, cars parked there, you can't get a fire engine there. But we're all there. We watch out for the kids. And again, there's been nothing addressed to the safety of the children on Autumn Circle with the sidewalks. It's just making it worse. And they get equal access. They can come in or out of Autumn Circle or Ward Street. It's, someone, the chief at one point, said there will be a tragedy on Autumn Circle if this happens.
Got it.
Graham Madison, 12 Autumn Circle. Just to follow up on the traffic. Previously, the applicant's traffic engineer provided a study, and one of the points that he made was that people wouldn't use this as a cut-through because it was 40 feet longer, which I personally think is laughable. That being said, these new plans changed that calculus around. Will that be, that study be redone? And will we get additional data on that? Are we going to rely on the old parts?
We have asked for updates based upon the revised plans.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Arthur Casey. I live at 17 Autumn Circle. My question is, there's a huge granite upcropping after that house where you now see this fence going in, and he's going to put condos or something on the other side. Are they planning on leveling the granite upcropping that is on Ward Street that is between where the property is there that is privately owned to where he's talking about developing? Because they're going to have to blast it, and that's going to change the water table. And since there's been no discussion about blasting and water table changes, I'm concerned, you're going to take a 30-foot granite upcropping and you're going to level it in order to match that plan. And I've heard no discussion about a blasting of the property.
Right. Was someone else? Yep.
Hello? Hi. I'm David Muggits, and I'm the owner of A.L. Muggits Company. And I've been in the septic business and the drainage business for a long time, and my family. We live right at 77 Ward Street. And that stream that Brad was alluding to, that goes through part of our property, goes through a meadow. It ends up in Weymouth into Robert Dwyer's property. We get flooded out periodically. We have wells. I don't have town water, I have a well. Next-door neighbor has a well, the Ahrens. I've been looking, I've been following this report by the, in Public Works.
The Board of Health.
Board of Health. And it's, I just left the Public Works a little while ago. But I think it's outstanding. I think they covered, I'm glad Kirk got up to talk first because he alluded to everything that I wanted to say about mounding studies. And I'm just going to make a point on nitrogen loading. Right from when I first got my Title V license, when we went to all the seminars, and that was, they were beating it into our heads about nitrogen loading. And when we were, we weren't used to it. I mean, this was something that, we were in, we installed systems for years, and we never thought about nitrogen. And after reading about it and knowing the effects of nitrogen, and once it gets in the soil, it's in there, I think we have to do whatever it takes to keep this nitrogen down, the levels down. And I'm looking at this project, and it's basically, when a project is started, when a development comes in, and usually they start with a minimum of nitrogen loading, like at five milligrams per 10,000, and this is, this is state, 10,000 gallons per day. And then, treatment is sometimes, they'll offer treatment to get that down to one or two. And that's, now, they're starting a project above the state limit, and again, I'm looking at this potential wetland. The Title V policy identifies numerous circumstances and criteria for imposing more restrictive. Now, I don't know how this board could approve of a project that has not only private wells and a potentially productive aquifer. Well, that potentially productive aquifer is quite large, and it, we call it the meadow, and it's very substantial. And I know there's great drains there, there's gravel, sand. I've done test borings over the years, and if the town needs an aquifer, I couldn't think of a better place and a better spot. And that's, that might be, you know, arguably, we could argue that point, but that's for another time. I don't want to even get into the drainage part of it. Ward Street in front of my house at 77 floods out three or four times a year anyway, and I would hope that would be mitigated. But again, this project, it's, the 15-plus milligrams of nitrogen per 10,000 square feet, it's, I can't believe it. It needs to be cut down. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? Okay. I'd like to talk schedule. Are you gentlemen available April 25th?
Yeah, yeah.
Wednesday. We checked out already. I'll look at the calendar here.
Hopefully, town meeting doesn't go a third night, so.
It would go over to the next Monday, so.
Okay.
Okay, so what I'd like to discuss with the board is continuing this hearing to April 25th at 7:00. And that I would request at that meeting that the zoning administrator, with the assistance of the Town Real Estate Council, Susan Murphy, prepare a list of proposed conditions for this application that would include the conditions that this board has previously identified. It would include the conditions recommended by other town boards, such as the Planning Board and the Board of Health, and that it would include the conditions recommended by our peer review experts, such as Jeff Durk and Pat Brennan. Would you be able to have that for us by April 25th? Okay. I would encourage members of the public to submit to the zoning administrator by the end of this week, if you could, any additional suggestions you might have for this project in terms of conditions that you think would be appropriate or required as we review this project. So, the end of this week is the 13th, Friday, the 13th.
It is on the Friday this year.
So, I would encourage you to get additional comments, again, in terms of any desired conditions. And we've also asked the applicant for a more detailed review of the waiver requests. We still don't have that. So, I am going to ask the board if someone would move for a requirement that the applicant provide us. I was going to say a week from today, which would be the 16th, but that's Patriots' Day, so push that to the 17th, which is Tuesday, the 17th. So, I'd ask if there's a motion to require the applicant to provide us by no later than April 17th with a definitive list of specific waiver requests that they would require for this project.
I will make that motion. So moved.
I would second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, that's April 17th, and then we will continue this hearing to the 25th at 7:00 P.M. Are you available, counsel? Are you? Emily, any other items for this evening? Susan? Okay. Anything further that the applicant wants to present this evening? Okay, with that, I-
Do you want to speak to the timing on hydrology, what is it?
Yes. Well, because I know they-
Mr. Dillon.
Right.
The 25th is what, two weeks?
Right, the 25th is in two weeks. We have made these requests for, you know, a number of times. We're just not going to let that delay our schedule. If you have an analysis that you can present prior to the next hearing, that would be terrific, but the comment was made by someone in the public, and I share that view that we cannot simply be on hold waiting for additional information. We need to proceed, and we need to make sure that the procedures are in place to protect the interests of the town. So, with that, I'd accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Before, I'm sorry. Subject to continuing this hearing to April 25th at 7:00 P.M. So moved? All in favor?
Aye.
Our adjournment for this evening, thank you.